On October the third, it is ten oh six. And I would like to have our opening prayer. Charlie, could you give us our opening prayer?
Please drive. That you bless us, God, with this gift, this mineral holding we have that you gave to us. Give us the strength, the courage, and the understanding to take care of it. Take care of our children, give it to our children, our grandkids. Pray for each and every one of our Keystone Mi, our council people and their homes. I ask these things in your name.
Councilman Big Horse?
Here.
Councilman Chishewala?
Present.
Council Chairwoman Erwin?
Here.
Councilman Redcorn?
Here.
Councilman Red Eagle?
Here.
Councilman Reevard?
Present.
Councilman Shackelford?
Here.
Second Chair Waller? We have a quorum. How you doing at Synergy?
Yes, sir.
Are you here? Synergy? Please step forward and take a seat.
Yes, sir. I have a seat, announce your company and your name, and the gentleman with you.
Yes. My name is Michael Ledford. I'm with Synergy Architects and Engineers. I'm here to represent William Tisdale over here. And right now, we are looking to do a development right off of the LL Tisdale Parkway at Apache. And so right now, we're planning to develop the property with some townhomes and two medical centers along with further development in the future. Currently, on the site itself, what we've done is we've got grading going on the site. I think with the exhibit that I sent over, it kind of gives you an idea of how much dirt we're moving. We're cutting and filling about the same amount, which is about thirty thousand cubic yards, to get a balance on the site. And I've got some fill areas of about four foot and cut areas of, in about the same. You know, we're just trying to balance out the site as far as our dirt work. Do you have any questions for me that?
Thank you, Reevard.
Yeah, thank you. I have a question. I'm Captain Paul Reevard. I'm a little bit familiar with this project because at one time I attended the City of Tulsa Committee meeting, and it was talked about the acreage, I guess adjacent to the west on Reservoir Hill.
Mm-hmm.
Was there some wells? Some oil wells and a tank battery? Are you familiar with those wells?
Right. Currently, that tank battery and the oil well is on the southern portion of the property, which is outside of this development area. My understanding is currently, we were out there yesterday at the site, and it looks, it appears to be that the leasee of that well has put in some temporary piping from the oil head to the storage tanks at this time. I think they're trying to keep the lease operational. For a long time, it had been inoperational, so they just recently put in some black HDPE pipe from the oil well head to the storage tanks.
That's our typical flow line. Our mineral state is two-inch poly pipe.
Right. But when I say temporary, it goes over an existing road or a trail that cars drive over. So I, and it was just
Let me interrupt here and say that I understand that these wells are not on the exact property of your diagram today where you're proposing building. But your email did say, and I questioned, you say that these wells are going to be plugged. And I don't know, before you come up with that, I talked to that operator, and he wasn't plugging wells. He told me he was producing one, and he had another one shut in that was capable of
So at the time, the information that I'd had, when I had discussed with Mr. Tisdale, the information that I had was that the operator, they were in talks to plug the well.
With who?
The leasee.
The leasee, Mr. Michael Scorsone, is the leasee that operates those wells. Who was in talk with to plug the well?
Well, my understanding with Mr. Tisdale is that he was, since they were at the time inoperational and that they weren't working, whether it was due to old pipes that were leaking or, I don't know. So Mr. Paul, Mr.
My understanding, the lease is valid, it's considered a producing lease. There's a shut-in gap, there's a shut-in oil well, there's a producing oil well, there's an acupad battery. Flow line you described is our typical flow line on our mineral state. Poly pipe above ground, not required to be buried. And sometimes it will cross over a trail and maybe even a road that you drive over on such a property. But, and I understand that this is on your property, but I'd want to evaluate that property for potential for production. There's no well, according to our Code of Federal Regulation, no well capable of commercial production shall be plugged. So even if the operator, the leasee, wanted to plug the well, he wouldn't be able to if it was still capable of production. And so you have a set acreage if you wanted to develop. If it's not currently under lease, you might have a right to do so. But I would want to evaluate this oil and gas lease and see if this acreage is desirable to drill on before I would want to make any decision regarding two-fourteen acres. That's all I have, Chairwoman.
Councilman Chishewala?
Yes, Councilman Reevard. Who'd you say that leasee was?
Michael
Scorsone?
Scorsone, I believe.
Scorsone.
S-C-O-R-S-O-N-E?
S-C-O-R.
He was operating in 2021 on our lease status reports, the only one that we have a printout on, is under a company called MSM Oil LLC. But he may have assigned those interests, the lease, to another name, I don't know. That's the kind of stuff that I think that we should do, our due diligence.
Councilman Red Eagle?
Thank you, Chairwoman. My name is Martin Red Eagle. I'm a council member here. And would it be advisable to, since the superintendent isn't here today? He's usually here on the third Wednesday of every month. And would it be advisable to check with him to see what the status of these wells and all the status of everything else before we proceed with this? That's just a suggestion.
Thank you. Sir, without actually having anything in writing, whether or not they think they may want to plug that or not, we have to get more information from the superintendent regarding that. We don't plug any well that's pumping oil.
Well, I'm not asking to plug that well. It was just what I was, when I sent you the email, I was using the information that I had at the time, that it was my understanding that it was to be plugged. We can currently design around that particular well and keep it operational. If we do move our development in the, you know, south of that, into that area, like I said, we design around working and existing oil wells all the time to keep them operational. And there are systems in place with the City of Tulsa and everything as far as setbacks and to keep those safely operational.
Well, sir, when you get all that information gathered up, could you send it to Lacy? And then we'll look at it again, and then we'll get back in contact with you after we've done our due diligence on whether or not those wells should be actually plugged? Thank you.
I have one question, sir.
Sure, sure.
This states down here in your email, this property will be developed later, and timing, this is unknown at the current time. Are you planning on expanding this Parkway development project later? Or is this your only footprint?
So the current development is further north. It is away from this particular storage tanks and oil well. We
This email states that you're talking to the landowner of this property that you're building on? Does he also own this property where these oil wells are at?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Give us some more information to tell by production. We'll have to check with the superintendent. And at some point in time, I'm sure Lacy will get back with you on it to tell you, you know, what we're going to do with the deposition of it, sir. Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Okay.
Councilman Redcorn, B, you're up.
It was last week, I believe, I went to the Fossil Energy and Carbon Management Working Group meeting. I wasn't, or we weren't invited till the second day. Anybody and anybody, everybody could show up that were members of the Oklahoma and other tribes. And what this group is, it's government-sponsored through, I believe it's a guy that works for the DOE, and I can't remember his name. He kind of helps them have these communications and working groups on tribes that are very heavy into fossil energy. And the tie comes in with carbon management. So that, to me, whether I like it or not, which Mr. Lynn and I, he just ran out of here. I think going forward, we've got to have at least that communication because even the major oil companies, they're kind of, some are going with it, some are not. But to me, I think, you know, being with the Indian nations, we need to have that conversation. So this is a great place to do it. They've got Bill McCabe, who's a, he's a co-chair. He's from the Navajo group, very successful. The Crow people were there, Crow Indian Reservation. And they're heavy into coal, which we're not so much. But there was a lot of conversation on coal and where I think the Osage fits right into this group because we're a heavy fossil energy group. One of the things they talked about was they're launching the methane rule stuff. They were dealing with methane and how they could move forward with it. I didn't want to burst their bubble, but I told them that when the Osage was confronted with this, we were elated when the new administration came in and dumped all that because we felt that was going to highly impact our production. So, you know, I think it behooves us to go ahead and join this working group by resolution. And I'd like, I talked to Mr. Reevard, he's kind of been involved, myself, I went to the meeting. If both of us could be assigned to this group, and if I can't make it, Mr. Reevard can. But I really think the Osage needs to be heard in this group because they have a, you know, they have communication going on with the administration. And some of the things I was hearing was great, some of the things I was hearing, no, that ain't going to work, you know, and told them why, told them the story of what we're doing in the Osage. So I'd like, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Reevard, if that's okay.
No, it's not. Next, we have Chairman Waller, he's going to speak.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Chairman Waller is next.
Oh, yeah, okay. But I would like
Second chair.
I would like at some point to make a resolution
He would like to say something about it.
That we, Osage Mineral Council, join this group.
I understand that.
And we assign Mr. Reevard and myself
I understand that, sir. Do you have a resolution ready for it?
If I can finish my conversation, please, this is a motion. I have a right to make a motion as a sitting elected official. So anyway, that's my motion.
I second it.
Any comments?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I sat on the ICW Department of Energy Committee on behalf of the nation. And I can tell you right now that everyone that sits on it could care less about fossil fuels. They're looking at green energy that's developed in Alaska. I would be in full commitment to this. I would like to be an alternate if available. The situation I see, that I've got a review, since I also sat on the National Petroleum event for White House, we could have Mr. Conrad help us a lot in getting this situation out. And I agree with you on everything. I'm the only voice, and they wanted to get together with some of the production that we have, and then, of course, the other tribes. And I think it is going to be detrimental to us to not be involved, so I'll be in support of it. Thank you.
Chairman, excuse me. Thank you, sir. Councilman Red Eagle?
I'll just say just a moment, David Conrad, you know, some of you are familiar with him. He works in Washington DC. He called me or emailed me about this, and I wasn't able to attend. I wish I could have attended, but from now on, if we join, I'll definitely go, not just as an alternate, but I just want to attend. Thank you.
Councilman Shackelford?
Yeah, this sounds like a good initiative. The only thing that I think that would help maybe facilitate the ability to have information shared whenever our members go to certain functions. Oftentimes, we get a report back to us verbally, but it helps sometimes to be able to have things in writing. But at the same time, if Mr. Redcorn or Mr. Reevard or Mr. Waller can't make it that day, I think by resolution, if we're going to do it officially like that, I think we should just leave it where the members of the council have that ability to go to those meetings. And if we need to designate who goes or whatever at that time, that's fine. But I just want to be able to make sure that if, like Mr. Red Eagle spoke about, if he has the ability to go, then he should be able to go. I don't like, I think it's better, it's not that I don't like it, I think it makes it better that everybody has the ability to go do that. And if that's what the intent of this resolution is, then I'm fine with it. But that's my feeling on that. Thank you.
Councilman Redcorn, you want to amend your resolution?
I clarify what earlier I said. I said I was not invited to the first day. I was not invited to the second day at one o'clock. Why? Because they have working group established members by resolution. So I showed up like Mr., everyone could show up after they were done. So my resolution is assign, they were thinking just one person. That's, they've been talking to Mr. Reevard, but I want to stick my nose in there too. So I asked Mr. Reevard if I could jump in there. And he's okay with that, so, and I talked to McCabe about it. I want to be in there too, in the room, on the working group. So if that's, and then afterwards, like I said, to have a three-day conference, then everybody's invited after that. But the working group is what I believe we need to get into. And that's, I'll stay with my resolution, assign Mr. Reevard and I as a working group participants. And then when they have a show or whatever they're doing, of course, we're all invited after the working group is done.
When you attend, when you attend, will you give us a written report of what's due?
If you give me a week, I'll have the report done. I would like, you know, I was going to try to get it done before this meeting, but I'm still trying to grab all the parts and pieces together. Thank you.
Do we have a second on that? Oh, excuse me. Councilman Reevard?
Thank you. So I just wanted to, well, thank Councilman Redcorn for attending this multiple-day event. I was, we were all invited, and I don't know if this started in Osage Mineral Council four. I'm thinking maybe it did during COVID. But it wasn't actually, the entity wasn't actually formalized at that time. And the Mineral Council, this Mineral Council, a year or two ago, received an invitation to one of these meetings, and I participated by Zoom. All tribal entities with natural resources like ours were invited. So I participated, and afterwards, I got an email from, I don't know if you'd call it a chairperson, but the person conducting the meeting actually sent me an email and thanked me for joining from the Osage Nation. And they actually introduced me and specifically thanked the Osage representative. So we were well-respected, just the fact that we were joined in on that meeting. So, and I think I participated in one of others. When I say participate, I attended by Zoom, and I don't recall if there was any comments or not, but I was, I sat in on the, this is the very early stage, before it was actually structured to where they had these formal meetings that you're talking about now. And I'd very much like to be in, you know, either one of the two members of the actual working group, or if not, at least an alternate for one. So I just think it's really good for us to network with these other tribal entities that have natural resources. And also, it helps us stay on top of federal regulations, like what Councilman Redcorn just mentioned about the methane. That would have been a devastating blow to our mineral state because if we weren't allowed to vent a little bit of gas off of the backside, the casing annulus of our wells, we would not be able to produce any oil because our reservoir pressures are so low. But anyway, with that being said, I just want to, I'll be in support of this motion, and with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I truly believe that anybody on the Minerals Council needs to go, if they want to go. They're not going to do that, so if we could have it where you two are the main ones, and anybody wants to go with you. I mean, they all need to go. I mean, that's fair. Also, we're the Osage Minerals Council, and I would have appreciated if, when you go, that you represent yourself as the Osage Minerals Council. You keep talking about Osage Nation, so that was in
No, I never mentioned Osage Nation.
Okay. So. Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Chishewala?
Yes.
Chairwoman Erwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Councilman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Reevard?
Yes.
Councilman Shackelford?
Yes.
Second Chair Waller?
Yes.
Motion passes. Travel reimbursement? Travel reimbursement for the conference you just attended?
Thank you. I was there just last, not even a week ago, got back. I, again, I was hoping I'd have a report out, but I'm having computer problems trying to get all the pictures and stuff. A very nice, and I'll send it to the Mineral Council, discussion from OU on all their research going on with CO2 sequestration. And they threw in one thing I was really interested, CO2 huff and puff. So I would like, you know, some of the things that I believe we should really get our fingernails into. I think that could give us a lot of leverage in our communication going forward as far as our ownership of everything underground. And tie that together, which I think the FECM group can do, Fossil Energy and Carbon Management Group. Like I said, I continue monitoring what the major oil companies are doing. And here lately, some of them are splitting off to CO2, some of them are hanging on to the renewable aspect as carbon management. So, you know, I think it's, it could be a good marriage for us as Osage mineral, our shareholders, to benefit if we hang in and do this work for, in the CEM group. But that being said, this conference, and I'll get this information out. One of the guys that was presenting was the head geologist for Capture Point. And he discussed at length their effort on how they're coming across and what their challenges are out there. And they're CO2-starved, or they would be expanding through the Burbank, which they have. They believe, and we know, it's been demonstrated, that our Burbank sands out there is producing a heck of a lot of oil through CO2. So, you know, and then I've kind of had to question, you know, there's a lot going on on this one piece of paper that they signed years ago, you know, and I have questions. Talking about the concession. And so I would say that we need to stay on top of that because, you know, they're having discussions. And one of the things that this gentleman showed on the slide, I didn't ask a question while I was in there, I would have probably been thrown out. Because number one, OU, University of Oklahoma, launched this study with Capture Point, and we never approved it. So, you know, that was in the back of my mind. And then he shows a slide that says, everybody, look, there are no seismic activity, there is none, in this reservation, he called it county. So I said, I wanted to stick my hand up and say, that's because we, I did tell that Fossil Energy and Carbon Management Group, when we went back, I said, the reason that is, is the Osage manages the Osage Reservation through a tri-party agreement signed in 1980 with the EPA, DOI, and us, tribal council back then. And we have managed this thing and kept the seismic activity, according to their geologists, to zero, to zero. State Oklahoma blowing it up, blowing it up, the biggest earthquake around September 2nd of two thousand, I can't remember, four or five years ago, and on record. So that shows me that I believe we need to tell this story. So I told it to the FECM group, tell our successes, what we've done here in the Osage. So anyway, all these things, this communication was happening. I didn't say anything to OU and these geologists, but I took notes, and I am aware of what they were saying. So anyway, I thought it was a good trip. I would encourage us to stay involved in this group and kind of keep aware of what's going on with OU and Capture Point. So I make, I don't know if I can make this motion, but make a motion. So I make them, I kind of, if I can make this motion, but make a motion that I get reimbursed for my travel to go to this conference.
I second it.
Have a question. Councilman Chishewala?
Yes.
Chairwoman Irwin?
In order. Paul, did you have, how much it was? Have you turned that into our?
It's overnight. Wasn't no registration fee, motel, mileage. I think that's it.
Minimal, okay.
I'm good. 147 in motel.
Next time, next time, I'd appreciate it if you would, would tell us.
$5,800. I see the kitty boy talking to the wait a minute now.
Next time, next time, I'd appreciate it if you would tell us and give us a hand up that you're going to do this. It would be appreciated. Maybe I.
Would do what?
When you, when you're asking for travel reimbursement.
Well, okay.
I just need, we just need to know what's going on.
Vote no.
Okay.
It's right in the ballpark of about 220 bucks.
Yeah, I'll vote yes.
Thank you, Paul.
Well, thank you.
Chairwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, go for it. Go for it, yeah. You're asking for it, go ahead.
I mean, I don't know if it's, you could vote against it.
Standing in front of the. Oh, good stain, yeah.
I want to say yes.
Councilman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Shackelford?
Yes.
Second Chair Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And if I can't make, I'm going to try to get that report out today, but by Monday.
Thank you, thank you.
Things that were told and said, really good.
Okay. I guess next on the list is executive. So I'll make a motion that we go into executive.
Second.
Have a question.
Chairwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Councilman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Shackelford?
Yes.
Second Chair Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Chishewala?
Yes.
Motion pass.